This meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Here.
Councilmember Tal?
Here.
Councilmember Udi?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shepard Romney?
Here.
Mayor Kwong?
Here.
Mayor today Victor Tow.
Here. The agenda is posted seventy hours prior to each meeting at the following locations: City Hall, the Crowell Public Library, and the Recreation Department. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. The city welcomes public in... Members of the public may address the city council by completing a public comment code and giving it to their city clerk prior to the meeting. At this time, the public may address to the city the city council on items that are not on the agenda. As sworn to the law, the city council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda, according to section five four nine five four point two. The mayor reserves the right to place limits on anyone of comments. Staff may be asked to follow up on such items. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? Mr. John Dustin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem. I just wanted to apologize I was rushed out of the house. I forgot my visual aids. But I wanted to talk to you about unsolicited written materials being distributed in the city. I noticed once again I got my copy of the Pasadena magazine delivered to my driveway, which I promptly collected and slipped through and deposited in the trash. But I noticed when I go on my walks around town, a lot of people are not as diligent. I've got people on my walk that they still have last month's Pasadena magazine sitting at the end of their driveway, along with the little rolled up circulars from the LA Times. And they just sit there. People will walk down to their driveway and pick up their newspaper and leave the flyers. And they sit there for weeks and weeks and weeks until they're pounded by traffic and rain and sprinklers. And it's my understanding that that is a violation of our ordinance. And I'm wondering, does the city have a plan to contact the publishers who leave those materials? So I mean, the Pasadena magazine, it'd be pretty easy to identify that person. The rolled up leaflet from the LA Times, I'm assuming it's the LA Times because they're the most prominent piece of material in there. But anyway, I just would encourage the city to look into that because our citizens don't seem to be picking them up quite regularly. And it looks very unsightly. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I have no report to see.
Do I have any motion to wait for the readings?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion pass. All in favor, motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any approve? Oppose? None? Motion pass. Presentation of certificate to Victor Tow Mayor for the day.
Good job. Mayor Towe, his parents for their generous donation to our schools.
I've got some questions for Mayor Tow. What school do you go to?
Valentine Elementary School.
And what grade are you in? Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Rodeman.
What's your favorite subject? Wow, well, that's exciting. What do you want to do when you grow up?
Be a paleontologist.
We were hoping you'd say councilman.
The kid does math. He knows better. Thank you, Victor. You did a great job. Now, by the time he's old enough to be a paleontologist, he'll be digging a burp up.
Thank you. Next, we have item number two, recognition of placement of Seaman Carley's name on War Memorial. Mayor Towe, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This past July, it came to our attention courtesy of Mitch Lehman of the San Marino Tribune, that a sailor who had perished at Pearl Harbor on December seventh, nineteen forty-one, had been identified as a former San Marino resident. As indicated in the staff report, Seaman First Class John Albert Carley was born on the Huntington Estate in nineteen twenty-two. And right after his eighteenth birthday in nineteen forty, he enlisted in the U.S. Navy. He was serving on the battleship USS Oklahoma on December seventh. As part of the work to include Seaman Carley on the war memorial wall, the Public Works Department was asked to research if there were any World War One service members from San Marino who could also be included. To date, our researchers have not found any such veteran. And in case ones are found in the future, we have procured two additional blank and matching tablets just in case. In the meantime, the department had one of the stone tablets reengrained to include Seaman Carley's name. And it was installed last Friday in time for Veterans Day. Joining us tonight is Mrs. Marilyn Long, Seaman Carley's niece, should the mayor and council like to recognize her and her uncle. To properly conclude this work, we will need a budget appropriation to pay for it, funding of which is available in the War Memorial donations account. I would like to thank Ms. Judith Carter of the Historical Society for her research into San Marino World War One veterans and the department's administrative analyst, Ms. Ruiz, who made this project happen in short order. This concludes staff report.
Thank you. Questions?
I have none, but I would love to hear from the niece. One more time, I heard her Thursday at Rotary was a wonderful presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I brought a picture of my uncle. This is John Albert Carley. I don't know the exact date of the photo, but it's obviously he was in Hawaii at the time. He was nine, just slightly over nineteen years old when he went down with the Oklahoma. And as I said, his... My sister and I gave DNA samples to this identification process six and a half years prior to him being identified. It took that long. Fifty percent of the... About fifty percent of the four hundred and twenty-nine that perished aboard the Oklahoma have now been identified. And other families are waiting, but it's wonderful closure for us. His family lived on the estate from nineteen twenty-one until nineteen thirty. His father worked in the greenhouses for the Huntington's. Thank you for honoring. Thank you very much.
Any other question? None?
I just want to also thank you. I remember you spoke, I believe, at Memorial Day. Was that correct? Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to thank you for bringing that to our attention because I think that's so important. And I appreciate your effort and the time it took on your family's behalf to get this to happen initially because that's very important work that's being done. And interesting when you think of the DNA connection. So thank you for doing that and being part of that process.
Thank you. City's family will recognize my uncle.
And I'm going to open this to public? Any other comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close that portion of comments.
I have a motion to make. I move to receive and file the October update on the progress of the inclusion of the U.S. Navy Seaman First Class John Albert Carley on the Lacy Park War Memorial and the progress of identifying World War One veterans and appropriate three thousand dollars from the donations fund. Unappropriated fund balance into account number two eight one dash fifty dash four two oh six dash nine four zero zero, Building Repair and Maintenance War Memorial.
Second?
All those in favor say aye. Roll call please.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shepard Romney?
Yes.
Mayor Kwong?
Yes. Motion passed. Thank you. And I hope that we don't put any more names on that memorial. Okay, now we move to item number three, appointment to the Board of Trustees of the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The item that is being presented before you tonight is the appointment of... The appointment to the Board of Trustees of the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District. The board notified the city clerk's office that the appointment for Scott Kwong was expiring as of January sixth of two thousand and twenty. And we were... We are required to make an appointment by that date. I have been in contact with Scott Kwong. He is interested in being appointed for an additional two years. So the appointment that... For January sixth, two thousand and twenty, would be a two-year term, which would end... Oh, I'm sorry. January... January third, two thousand and twenty-two. So with that, that's all I have to present. The staff recommendation is that you approve and appoint Scott Kwong.
Any question?
We appreciate Scott taking on this duty and his timely report. He's done a great job.
Now, I'm going to open this to public? Other comment? Seeing none? Any more comments? Do you have a motion?
I move to reappoint Mr. Scott Kwong to serve on the Board of Trustees for the Greater Los Angeles Vector Control District for a two-year term ending January three, two thousand and twenty-two.
Any second?
I'll second.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Motion passed. Now let's go to the same calendar. Is there anything? On to poll?
Right to poll number twelve.
Right to number twelve. Anyone else?
I want poll number five.
So do I have a motion for items four through eleven except aye?
So moved.
Any second?
I'll second.
Roll call, roll call please.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shepard Romney?
Yes.
Mayor Kwong?
Yes. Motion passed. Now let's go to item five.
Yes. First of all, I do appreciate the greater explanation that occurs and the notes that are provided. But I do have a question. On page one fifty-seven of the report, we talk about the increase of administration. And you point out five A. And in five A, you give an explanation for about fifty-four thousand of the sixty-eight thousand dollars in change over the previous year. And it's... If you're going to explain it, explain it all because otherwise it creates a suspicion. Do we know what has happened to the other approximately fourteen thousand dollars that is an increase over the previous year? Or is this something you might have to report back on?
You're talking, just to be clear, you're talking about note five A?
Note five A. You say the increase, the increase was sixty-eight thousand. And it's due for three reasons. Legal services, twenty-four...
Oh, I see. You're saying there's fourteen thousand left unaccounted for?
There, yeah. Seventeen thousand in legal expenses. And then salary-related expenses of thirteen thousand. That... What's my math is wrong. Does not add equals sixty-eight thousand. It adds up to fifty-four thousand. So what I'd like to know is what was the other fourteen thousand? Is it just generally increasing costs? Is there a specific expense item that didn't get related in the note? But when we have it... You did it in the previous month. You did it in a lot of these. But when this gets left unexplained, it creates anxiety and it makes me more difficult for me to sleep at night.
We don't want that. We'll go back and look at the notes and figure out what the rest of the increases is. I would just say, thank you for bearing with us for the last year. As you know, within our bearings, we're a compliance director. We've been short-staffed in that department. So I appreciate all the work that the department's been doing this clearly as a whole. We will find out what that fourteen thousand is and we can go to report on that. Do you want us to just let you know? Email? Would you like it reported?
I would like it reported publicly. I'd like the report to be amended and reflected accordingly so that the public has an opportunity to know how it's done.
So do you... Are you not going to...
I'm not going to... I will not move. If someone else wants to move, it's acceptance. It's up to them. But I will not. I just want it all appropriately accounted for. And I realize it might be an oversight, but...
Sure. And either way, we'll report on this in the December meeting.
Yeah.
So it's reported, then. But may I ask a question?
Yes. I'm so good.
Okay. On page one thirty-one, item four, the Recreation Department had an increase in twenty-one thousand in related rental income from August nineteen compared to eighteen. Curious what that is? We... We'll have to check on that as well. This report is...
We have a lot of the same groups each year, so I...
We do, although every once in a while we do have an extra rental. So this report is intended to be an overview, not necessarily a reconciliation of all the costs. But we just have to look at that for you. So I was busy taking the note on the other one. This was item number which on page one thirty-one?
Page one thirty-one, item four. Thanks. Because it represents...
And let me be clear, given the tone of that comment. And that is that I do appreciate the fact that this is substantially more information than we have in the past. However, when you do give information, it sometimes whets the appetite for more. And so I want to make sure that the information is correct so that we don't get emails eventually asking why the discrepancies. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I guess we'll table number five and we'll go to item four. Any public comment? Item five? All right, then that's moved to item twelve.
I would appreciate an explanation for the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for a three and a half million dollar project. It just is pretty high to me.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. In preparing for the... What seems to be the largest single resurfacing project in recent memory, I wanted to ensure that we were going to be able to deliver the project on time, on schedule, and on budget. So in my experience, projects of this dollar amount necessitate a dedicated engineering perspective, a dedicated engineer to do the design work and then a dedicated construction manager, inspection service to make sure it gets done in accordance with the plans and specifications. So what I did earlier this year was send out a request for proposals. I received two. And as it describes in there, after going through the selection process, TransTech, who is currently our city traffic engineer, provided the best proposal in terms of how they were going to approach the job and their approach and expertise that they brought. The other firm was not qualified and really submitted a very poor proposal as to how they were going to do the work. So I sat down with TransTech and squeezed them as much as I could in order to have both the cost of the design work and the cost of the construction management in proportion to if we were to gear up on our own internally, what that dollar amount would look like. The thirty-three thousand dollar fee for design services is less than two percent of the total project budget. And in my experience, usually projects of this nature, you spend about ten percent in the design.
Did you say thirty-three sixty-five thousand? Nine hundred and eighty-five for design?
Well, I think if you take a look at Exhibit B one of the agreement, which is page...
No, no, I know.
Okay. Three twenty-eight.
What I asked TransTech to do was their original proposal split it, made it not very clear as to what the design fee would be. So what I did was I asked them to look at it in a variety of different ways. And yes, it is the sixty-five thousand nine hundred because that includes the... What they did was they had their management and administration very... Or put into their design fee instead of splitting it out between construction phase and the design phase. So when you look at Exhibit B one, at the top it says, "Design Phase Services, thirty-two thousand five hundred." And then below that advertisement and the construction phase and then management and administration, they're showing it based on the phase of the project versus in B two, which was in their original proposal. Sort of did not characterize it, or categorize it, rather, in the locations that we, in my profession, traditionally look at. What's your design fee? So I did that in order to have it a basis of understanding, was there a design fee? Was there construction management fee? Within the general parameters of what you see in the civil engineering industry. Typically, design fees are around ten percent of what your construction cost is or your budget is. In this particular case, in a more energetic environment, perhaps, of design, you would be looking at maybe a two or three hundred thousand dollar design fee. They have it far less than that. And that is in proportion of what I asked them to do. I asked them to do very simple, basic engineering plans and specifications because it's not really a very complex project. It's just a lot of it. So then the next part that I looked at with them was their construction management and inspection. And for that, that's really where the metaphorical rubber is meeting the road because having good inspection and good management from our side of a three-plus-million-dollar paving project is pretty important. It is three times the size of the project that we did in-house this past year. And it does exceed our abilities to keep up with it while performing all the other great changes that were made in the city. So from the perspective of the general cost of construction management is anywhere between ten and twenty percent of your total budget as well. And so you're looking at that's a little bit more closer to what the industry would typically see for a project of this magnitude. In my experience down in the South Bay, we would do five million dollars a year of resurfacing. And our design costs were usually around three hundred thousand dollars a year and then an equal amount, maybe actually a little bit more for the construction management because you're doing a lot of work in a variety of different locations in town. It's not focused in one area. The contractor is moving about the town. And you want to make sure you have full-time eyes, paying attention to all the different work zones that they have going on. So that is, in a long, roundabout way, why we come up with this and why the costs are what they are.
How many weeks of paving do you think it will be?
I mean, it's probably six weeks of work, if not eight weeks of work.
From the actual length of the asphalt?
The length of the asphalt is usually a very fast process. It's the preparation. It's the grinding process. It is the traffic control process. There is things that you do to have the contractor prepare their...
What do you think?
...better replacement that goes on.
What do you think the estimate is for the prep to the finish in terms of weeks for three and a half million dollars?
It's probably a hundred working days that I would estimate at this moment.
You know, because I did the quick math on their estimate of twelve hundred and sixty hours. That's thirty weeks. You know, that sounds like that's more supervision than the work being done.
Well, we... I did ask them that when they're here, they provide a full crew. So one of the likely is more than one individual that will be here. There's also the management of the contractor, making sure the invoices are being paid. And that's obviously office work. It's not the field work, which is really critical to make sure that they're progressing in due course and that you're getting what it is, you're getting what you're paying.
In hiring a consultant for this, are there other ways to provide the same supervision that would be less expensive?
Well, I could be as so bold as to say if there was another professional engineer staff, that would be part of the duties of that engineer to be responsible for performing those roles.
Yeah, because what I'm obviously thinking about is a, you know, a hard time or a different consultant and not an engineering firm. And how come this is paid for separately than from the asphalt or from the street reconstruction company? I would assume that that would be part of their scope of work as well. I'm just having a hard time getting my head around two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for a three and a half million dollar project when it's not coordinating lots of subcontractors that are building, you know, the building.
It's really the construction management inspection, which is the engineering service... The engineering portion of it is really straightforward. Very simple bread and butter work, especially as I designed the layout for the designer that it's very simple like the plans that we did last year, which were very, very simple plans, but enough to communicate what we wanted to do. But then unless you put on the plans, the more you put into the field. So you want someone out there that's upholding your standards of what it is that you installed. You could certainly look for a part-time person to do the work. That is not necessarily, from my perspective, as desirable as having someone full-time that as they're not working on this project, they're not just billing you for that half hour, they're also doing other things engineering-wise within the city to help deliver projects.
I'm sorry, did Paul have a last comment?
So it... And I've used part-time employees or part-time consultancy. There's a... I'm certainly sure that there are helpers and personnel issues related to... For how you characterize them. But if you have someone that is on staff, they can be monitoring this project while simultaneously working on something else. So you get the benefit of that. If you have someone that you just hired for a single assignment, it's very similar to having a consultant is when you need them, they're here. And then when they're not, they've gone away. So if you have someone here that's working on that, working that project up in the field, but at the same time can be doing design in the office, at the same time can be doing other engineering work in the city, you're gaining more benefit out of your personnel. assets.
Did you look at what the county might cost to come in and run the surface for us?
I did not look at the county.
That would be interesting.
Can you legally?
Yes.
I mean, you put it out for bid, but they'd have to...
The county does not normally come in on a personal basis.
Yeah, you put it out, you put it out for bid, you get so many bids back.
I'm looking for a creative way to provide the same service, but not spend close to $300,000.
Oh, I appreciate that.
And I know the county isn't that far away, and I visited them once, and they had a menu of prices that they would do things for, so I think it would be worth a call to see what other ways we could provide the same support, and maybe do it for us.
I also had a problem with this, but I'm not sure about the county move, but in terms of hiring for TransTech, because it is a large design firm, and this project, I think, as you said, it's not that complicated, there's just a lot of it. And so I tried to figure out the math based upon their numbers and based upon, and essentially, you're paying almost, what, $46,000 a month for them to oversee this? And that's a lot of money, whether that comes out in terms of a part-time person or an outside consultant or county, I think that that is too much to manage something that is relatively simplistic, in the sense like we've been repairing our roads, and you have done it. I understand the scale is more ambitious this year, but not to the tune of almost $300,000. So I also would like to see some other ideas come forward, and if that's something, I would ask you to ask the city manager and come back to us with some creative alternatives, because I'm not comfortable spending this large amount. And just to further explain, I did speak to some people who have experience in construction management, and I understand it's in the corporate world, but everybody felt like for a big project, yes, you know, you can get a 10, 20, but that's when they're also managing dozens of different contractors, and you're putting in electricity and foundations and whatever, plumbing, et cetera, et cetera, the list goes on, and that's not the situation here. So their thought was, if you're managing one sub, it should be like 2% of a contract to 3%, but not approaching 9. And so I was trying to see, based upon what you were saying, that there was more, because I couldn't really figure it out. I know that they're doing this design work, and in part, you already did a significant amount with your experience for this last year that I think somebody could come in and build on, and that's something I know needs to be done, and I don't, you know, know if you have the time or the scope to do it for this project. But the management issue for me was just too much for the fee to come in at over 225,000 or thereabouts for them to maintain, and particularly when you look at the time. I mean, that's a significant amount of money you're voting to, in addition to the cost of actually improving our strength.
What's your deadline on this? I mean, when do you have to have somebody in place to start the work?
We would like to go out to bid, and this winter is the best time, so we get the best price, as I understand.
The Vice Mayor is absolutely correct, is the best time to go out to bid is about in January, because contractors are lining up their work. Further you get into good weather, the more they get busy, and the more now you're paying a premium for their participation here. If I might offer the council, the critical item in this particular item is getting the design done, and then...
Yeah, that's what I said, can be cut in and separated.
We could slice it, and I talked to the two, two TransTech, and they're more than willing to just do one part as we, as I go back and look at these other options. We have time for that. It's the design part that I start to get a little...
And the design is thirty-two thousand?
That's thirty-two thousand.
I would appreciate it if we did that, very like your suggestion.
I'd be comfortable going ahead with the design, and then let's figure out for different ways to do the supervision.
I'm totally up for that. My whole goal is, because this is a very large project, I want to make sure that I did deliver to you, and then we start building it in the spring, so that when it comes July 1st, I come back to you and say, okay, that project's done, I won't spend another three-and-a-half million dollars, and you'll all be excited about it.
Councilmember, if you'd ask me a question?
Yes, I have a question and a comment, and I'm sort of coming at this from a different angle. Those of us, and I think most of the council members have, have attended meetings with other cities, like the League of Cities or the Council of Governments, and we know how big TransTech is, and they do have a good reputation. But that sort of worries me in terms of eliminating competition. They really are huge, and to that I have a question and a comment. You said the second proposal had a poor understanding of the project. Did they make any contact with you, or did they simply submit a, what might have been an appropriate bid?
On the days, submitted a proposal, and in reviewing their proposal, they did not understand the simple language I used, basically, I needed a very simple set of plans and specifications. I gave them a copy of last year's project, and I said, I want you to provide me a proposal on this, and that if your proposal was acceptable, we would open up your costs and see what you were. They did not understand that at all, and so if they can't understand that, and that's a very clear, I was very clear that that's exactly what I wanted, I did not want a full and complete set of plans, because you can go nuts on that, spend buckets of money, spend a 10% of three and a half million dollars, totally not necessary here, and if they were not understanding that, I was not very confident that then their construction management end of things was going to be any better. Yes, they, without going too far afield, and the attorney will keep me in line here, but while their costs were competitive, they were not going to be able to do the work, we were going to have to spend way more time to get them to what it is that we want.
And again, I'm going back to the point that it's feeling like TransTech just isn't running into a lot of competition these days, which has its own issues. And the final thing that I'd like to comment about the administration of TransTech, there are eight top administrators, they're all men. At this point, there are enough women graduating with STEM degrees that they might want to think about diversifying, since they're really covering a lot of this state with their projects, and we hope that you can maybe pass that along. They're a huge company, and we just want to see more complete options when we are bidding. Thank you.
Which councilman? Yes, and I have a question as well. What was the reason that you did not include their numbers so that we had something to compare it to? Is that, is that a legal requirement? Or, because when I see other reports, I see that we're getting, you know, contractor A bid this, B bid this, C bid that, D bid this amount, this was the lowest, but for some reason, we didn't feel comfortable, it's up to you to make the decision. That didn't happen in this instance, all we got was TransTech, and I was wondering, was there a legal reason for it?
The Business and Professions Code protects the proprietary information of their cost proposals from everyone else. So you're required by state law to select based on qualifications, so you rank them based on qualifications, and you take the first one, you say, and you open up their cost envelope, and if you don't have sticker shock, or you can negotiate with them, then you work through the process with them. If you're unable to complete satisfactory negotiations with them, then they're discarded, and you go to number two.
How in the past have you had comparative bids, we've had reset information?
You're allowed to do that with public construction contracts and non-engineering or architecture design services. They are protected by law, not have their information publicly disclosed.
Well, so the only thing that would have been protected in this instance is the design fee, the remainder would have been subject to our...
It was all part of the professional services that they were going to be offered, so that would, that was covered to be in that.
These are public contracts, too. I mean, how can you, as a, as a city council, decide when you're getting something appropriate, have a public hearing, not have any information, but once again, probably complaining about the city and the state?
It's happened a couple times this year, sometimes there are public, sometimes there are not.
Yeah, and that depends upon the services, and because of the Business and Professional Services that Mike was talking about, it specifically covers and attacks the professional services of architects and engineers.
So it's the engineering factor that...
Yes, the design services.
The design, and if it has that aspect, then it's, that's what I see.
Oh, why?
Ask the legislature, but it is to protect their proprietary information, and whether you agree or not, that's what they have put in the Business and Professions Code.
And I don't mean to be starting a battle with another council member or something that is probably appropriate to hint at, but we as a council, unless we're dealing with a minority of business, and they get value from that, we shouldn't be in any way trying to dictate the way they do business, or manages their business. And I understand your comment may be...
It is merely a comment, certainly nothing that we can put into a contract with a company this huge, with that much business in the state, it's simply something that we would like to see. No means beyond that.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, okay.
All right, any other questions? Okay, then I'm going to open this to the public. Any questions from the public, any comments? See none, and I'll back to comments. Councilmember Udi, you want to go?
Yeah, I like the breaking the, you know, the proposal into two, and go forward with the design, and hold back on the supervision and figure out a more creative, cost-efficient way to do that. I just can't believe that, you know, what quarter million dollars to supervise for 30 weeks is, you know, there's got to be something there.
I'll try to check, Jacobowski.
I could support further exploration.
I concur with breaking it.
Ice Man?
Yes, I think that would be the best approach for this.
I concur to. Do I have a motion?
I move to award a professional design services agreement for the amount of $32,500 to TransTech engineers in Abchino, California, for the design services for the FY 1920 Street Rehabilitation Project, and authorize the city manager to execute a revised agreement on behalf of the city.
I'll second that.
Rocco, please.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Toll?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Mayor Huang?
Yes, motion passed.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
I'll pull number nine just so...
Yes, I'm sorry, I apologize, Mr. John Dustin, I'm sorry I overlooked. Come up.
What?
Item number nine.
Good evening again. I just wanted to make a couple comments. I'm not either for or against the extension of the contract, I think that's perfectly appropriate. I just know that you'll be looking at a replacement contract coming up soon, and I think it's important to figure out a way to have a verification process, that you're getting what you're paying for. I mean, just my anecdotal experiences, I haven't seen a street sweeper go by my house in a long time, it used to be a fairly regular occurrence, even though it happens, you know, early in the morning. I did happen to catch a street sweeper, not this last Friday, but the Fridays prior, and they went by my house at a quarter to eight, which is actually outside their time window, to do the sweeping. Because I, I look at my street, and I know the day that they're supposed to sweep it, and I cannot tell that it's been swept, and years and years ago, you could tell, you get up in the morning, you see the street, it looks different, it's clean, it doesn't, it hasn't looked that way in years. So the street sweeper went by, I ran out, looked at the gutter, it, it looked untouched. If anything, it looked worse, because the brush was like pulling asphalt out of the street and throwing rocks everywhere. So I just think that that's important, to figure out a way to verify that you're getting what you're paying for.
All right. Dr. Moll, can you follow up on that, please, with the add-ins? Thank you. Okay, now, Tragers Report, Ms. Jahan, please come up.
Before we get there, I just want to make a comment. Drew Boucher from the School District was here.
Boucher.
Boucher, pardon. She, she wanted to thank the city for the various items that we agreed to, but she decided not to pull them, or request them before.
Thank you. Jahan, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, and Mayor Toll.
Still here, nice job, Mayor.
I promise, this is going to be short, all right? As of the end of September, September 30th, we have a total of $28,620,000 in our portfolio, out of which we have 49%, about $14 million and change in our bank accounts, and 28% about $8 million and plus in LEAF, 15% about $4.2 million in CDs, and 8% $2.2 million in various bonds. The LEAF on, the interest rate on LEAF is about 2.28% as of the end of September. CDs, we're looking at 1.95, bond is at 1.56, but the negotiated interest rate on the money market account is at 2.47%, so that's why we have a lot of our liquidity in the bank accounts. And in my package, I always include the reserve requirement maintained by our current financial institution, so they maintain a lot more than what's required by stakeholder or governmental code. The total portfolio, combined portfolio interest rate for the end of September is about 2.26%. For the month of September, we did two, we purchased two CDs, and they're top-grade CDs, all at our maximum $250,000 FDIC insurance coverage. One is at 2.5 years, ten, and the other one is five years. And we will be getting our first property tax payment in December, so we will be monitoring our reserve balance and invest the liquidity accordingly. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Yeah, I have a quick one. With your schedule on page 394, it would be interesting to see, you know, a monthly, a month-end tally, so we can see how the reserve, how the reserve is growing or declining.
Sure.
Because it's 28/6 now, you know, do you remember January about what the cash and investments were in January, right?
I can pull it before, please.
Just, just...
Okay, all right. We'll do.
Thanks. Any other, any question from the public?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is new business.
I look at the report.
Second.
Pressure, any on...
Second. Hold those in favor of the eye. New post, city judge, motion passed, new business, item 14.
Thank you so much. This item, you see, is directed to by the police department, this is actually raised by our city attorney's office, so where she can have our city attorney present this item to you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The vehicle code, second, the vehicle code gives authorities to cities to prohibit or restrict parking during all or certain hours of the day. And so pursuant to that, the City of San Marino has adopted ordinance that sets forth various parking time limitations and requirements, one of which is that currently, that someone cannot park a vehicle for 48 consecutive hours on the street. The vehicle code also gives authority to cities to tow vehicles if a vehicle is left standing on a street for 72 or more consecutive hours. And for some reason, that portion of the city's ordinance, which states that vehicles can be towed after 48 hours, does not line up with the authority granted to the city under the vehicle code, and that's vehicle code section 22651K, as in, as a K. So the bottom line here is that the city should amend its ordinance to comply with the authority given to it under state law, which is with the 72-hour parking requirement. There, I understand that concerns have been expressed by members of the public about not changing the 48-hour maximum time period, and instead leaving that as is. So before you this evening, we have provided an amended ordinance that keeps the restriction that no one shall park on any street a vehicle for... that no one shall park on any street a vehicle for longer than 48 consecutive hours, but may also includes the change that after 72 hours, the vehicle can be towed. So that way, the city is completely in compliance with state law by setting the hours restriction that you want, but not towing until 72 hours. I'm here to answer any questions, and that's the end of my report.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes, so council, you're then saying that the end of 48 hours, the car can be caged, and there'd be a fine, and then 24 hours later can be towed, both of the terms.
That's correct. Thank you.
Councilmember Tal?
Excuse my total confusion over there, but I thought we had a restriction against overnight parking.
I'm sorry, say again.
We have a restriction against overnight parking on, on streets. Is, is, people get fined for doing that.
Yes.
Unless we get a permit from or advise the sheriff's department. Does this change this at all?
No, it does not, because you've got a separate section that prevents parking from, I believe, if I remember correctly, from 2:00 AM to 5:00 or 6:00, something like that, that prevents the overnight parking. So this does not change that, but it is this other section that allow, that prevents someone from parking for consecutive times as well.
Okay. As long as it doesn't change that.
Councilmember Udi?
No questions?
Vice Mayor?
No, I just, I wanted to thank the city attorney, because we spoke about this today, and I appreciate that you modified it so that the 48 hours, which is the wish of the community and the residents, will still be part of it, and it just gives the authority now more clearly to our police department than when they can do the towing. So I think this is a perfect compromise that we're trying to respect the community's longstanding wishes in this regard. So thank you very much for your prompt work.
Okay, thank you. Any public comments? Seeing none. Any comments from the council? Who have a motion?
So if you give us just a second, council is trying to revise the motion. So the motion would just be to introduce the ordinance for first reading by title only, ordinance number 0-19-1358, Nordens of the city of San Marino, admitting such in 15.07.05 of Article 7 of Chapter 15 of the San Marino municipal code, by increasing the time period by which vehicles can be towed to 72 hours.
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Motion passed. Item 15.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The city council adopted an economic development plan as a party initiative for this fiscal year. The goal of this plan is to develop incentives and programs that facilitate the improvement of the city's commercial corridors. The first step to developing a program was to form a team to help staff and the council liaisons to develop ideas and strategies for this plan. The team meets regularly twice a month and includes councilmember Jacobowski, councilmember Udi, includes Shelley Oil, which is a current planning commission member, Kelly Carpiak, who is the owner of the Toy Bookstore, Isaac Hong, who has multiple businesses along Huntington Drive, Corinne Adelian, who has a business on Mission Street, Nancy White, who owns Frame Shop, and Linda Zadoyan, who owns the San Marino Cafe. The city has also onboarded Barry Foster of HDL Econ Solutions to provide up-to-date demographic information to the city. To date, Barry has provided the inside market study, which is attached to the staff report. This study includes demographics and analytics that are within the boundaries of the city. In a few weeks, Barry and HDL will supply the city with an additional inside market analysis that includes the trade area, which includes demographics and analytics of information that's, that's outside the city. The final deliverable will include a three-year economic development action plan that will help shape the direction and focus of the team and the city. In our meetings, the team has discussed a variety of issues, including code barriers, parking options, administrative roadblocks, streamlining the process, incentive programs, as example in the staff report, the facade improvement program, as well as the small business program, and target demographics. In the next few weeks, the team will begin to focus and discuss marketing strategies and the approach for communicating such a plan to the public using a variety of methods, which includes approaching PTA meetings, as well as road re-meetings and, and other types of public meetings. In between this step, staff will draft new code provisions as discussed in the report and proceed to the normal code adoption process. Staff will begin to introduce these code amendments at the beginning of the year. The incentive programs, which may include, for example, the facade improvement program, small business incentives, as well as the potential of waiving some of the fees as an incentive, will need further vetting during the budget process and will likely be presented to the council for next fiscal year. The information that we obtained through the team, that we developed through the team, as well as information that is provided by the HDL consultant, will be uploaded to the city website for the public to view. I will pass around, as I mentioned, the third and final deliverable of HDL. This is a sample of, of a product they provided to the city, but I'd like for the council to take a look at this as I pass it by. The city and the staff has also developed a website on our city webpage that includes new information related to economic development, which includes the vacancy list, it includes active businesses that are in town, it does include incentive programs for, for small businesses. We've also added the, the marketing of available sites on our website. For example, if you go to our website and click on a link that's associated to a construction project, it'll send you to a separate link that provides a marketing strategy for that property owner. Staff has also developed some tools for ourselves that help sort of visualize sort of our plan, and we developed a map of the central business district to identify a lot of the districts and the nodes that are currently available to us in the city. That map is fairly large. I do have it rolled out at the public counter for anyone who wants to go and see it. I'm hoping that I can condense that to put that on the city website, but for now, if anyone is interested, is out of the counter for, for the meantime. And so with that said, I'd like to give a moment to our council liaisons to provide comments and feedback before we move forward.
First, I want to, you know, thank Aldo and Stephanie, and you should know that, you know, to get meetings twice a month, you know, is pretty stout, and to get a good representation of businesses to come and participate, you know, it's, it's a good process of, of running. And I think it's important for us to, you know, get ready to financially support this so that we can attract more businesses than the businesses we, we have, I'll say, protect them, because, you know, I've been in business a lot, but I've never had the guts to sign the personal guarantee and the lease. So those people that have the guts to do that, I have orders to get them, and they should support them.
And I'd also like to thank Aldo and Stephanie. I know Aldo has attended a number of different conferences and training where some future wave thinking has been going on. And similarly, I'm very, very impressed with the business owners in town who have voluntarily given their time to this effort. As we know, in the coming years, retail is changing. Stores as we know them are becoming multipurpose. Much is moving out and different concepts are coming in. I am extremely impressed at this very, very early stage of the creative thoughts that are coming about, and I'm to share Councilman Udi's role that we can bring some exciting new concepts to you in the near year. Thank you.
Councilwoman Matold?
Yes, I appreciate both Aldo and Department Director Salantes and the staff's work as well as the liaisons. The one point, and I've been appreciative of the effort, but I don't want to, I don't want to send any misinformation out there to the public with respect to us, you know, suddenly deciding to open a CBS or anything like that. So they understand that through the concept of this council liaison, as well as the local business owners, that what we're trying to do is make sure that we're, we remain the same in the environment, except we improve the environment that they already know.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I also can, would echo my fellow colleagues' comments about this being done. I was, did have a couple of questions, so I don't know if we're just questioning or commenting at this point. But in your summary here, I, I was most interested to see the facade improvements, because I do think that is affecting our businesses, and so I appreciated the effort, and I don't know, I, if people are interested, page 418 of our, no, sorry, 419, is, you actually talk about the financials of the incentives. This, this, I don't know, you, yeah. And so in here, it said, excuse me, $10,000 per facade is a, is a, the funds available. And then it had another $5,000 as a discretionary additional grant amount. And so I was interested in what triggers that extra money, and I, I don't know the cost of redoing facades and commercial businesses at all. So I'm wondering, is this number, is it significant? Is this the norm in this for a facade improvement? Have you had anybody study what people are investing? And also, my concern is that somebody might use a facade improvement to improve the look of their building, but that doesn't mean they're going to rent it. They've just gotten money from the city to fix the front, and so there's no, sort of like we talked about before with other groups, if we're giving them something, then I think that there also should be a requirement that it's an active listing for a business to go in, for example, or if it's running, that there is some commitment. I know they can't come back again within 10 years, but I also wanted something to say, no, and you're going to put a business in there. It's not just to improve a vacant storefront, which we seem to have an increasing amount of. So I, I don't know how you draft that properly, but I do know that other cities do have facade agreements, so I'm sure there's, that's my suggestion for something to add, but I think that's a brilliant way to get and hopefully update the look of our, our commercial center a little bit, and again, attract people to drive by and, and businesses to come here.
And, and part of the brainstorming process, I just threw out a number and said, let's, let's throw $200,000 at this and see what happens, you know, just to get the lid off the concern with, with money, to see what ideas came up, that this is one of the ideas, and, you know, appreciate and agree with, you know, how to tweak and massage that, but what we're, you know, trying to say is let's be business friendly. We don't make any money off the sales taxes anyway, so maybe there's relief there, you know, if it looks more attractive, more consistent, might get a better look and feel. So, you know, I think, you know, the committee is taking that spirit forward.
No, I think it's brilliant. So I was very happy to see that. I also was interested, I think on page, hold on for a second, there was one other thing in the report or the work that's been done so far that I wanted to ask you about, and that had to do with the vacancies. So I do see, and I thank you because I think at the town hall, we didn't have this information, so it's been provided, page 449 of our packet. And I was interested to see, so is this up to date, and are these truly vacant, or are these things that are open for sale or for lease? Because, for example, like Colonia Kitchen, obviously, is still operating, it's not vacant, but I know that they're interested in selling the property. So I'm just wondering, this encompasses that situation as well as flat-out vacant space?
Well, it, it, as of a month ago, it was up to date, but, but the way we label that list is not so much of a vacancy list. We label it as a business opportunity.
Okay.
And so the reason why Colonia Kitchen is on there, although it's not vacant, it is for sale, which is a, an opportunity. And so we want to sort of get away from using the word vacancy, rather, rather using a positive word of opportunity.
Okay, so you need to update the...
Right, right.
It says vacant.
Right, yeah.
Okay, okay. And is this the type of thing, is this what you refer to as on our website?
Correct.
So if somebody was interested, say, in looking at finding new, a place, then they could go to this list and drive by and see what's available.
Correct.
Perfect. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that work, and, and it'd be good to keep that up to date and hopefully. Ms. Phil?
Yeah, that, that list, if I may, that list is what drives a lot of our communication with potential businesses, is, is they see that list and, and they immediately call me to ask about the property, the, the lease rates, who the ownership is, so that way we can sort of get, get them both at the table for negotiation. So in, in my short history of working this program, that list has been, been pretty critical for us to start the dialogue process.
Okay. And the last, the final thing, I'm sorry, that I need to bring up is, due to the length of time, I think it would be useful to know how long some of the spots have been vacant, because we have an ever-growing number, and both, we have some that have been there, I think probably going on a decade of vacancies. And to me, that's a loss of money for whoever owns that, but also it's a loss to the community because that space, that's not serving some purpose, isn't obviously not giving us sales tax, and most importantly, it's more work for our police officers and potentially our fire, because now you have an unoccupied place, they're having to check on, keep an eye on, and as we know, related to a house, actually, people move in and sometimes worse things happen from there. So there is a criminal element that our city needs to consider, and since public safety is very important to me and other council members, as well as the community, my concern is, and I think I spoke to the city attorney about this, and I know that we're going to do a fee structure, that there should be an assessment on vacant businesses, just like we do at homes. They should have to register with our police, there should be a fee that they pay, so, because it does cost our city. And I don't know what the proper method is. I know that we're thinking about doing this, the fee schedule review, sort of, but I wanted to highlight this for you, that this might be something that we need to go in the direction of, because it is costing our city resources, and it's just sitting there vacant, so it's not contributing in a lot of ways. Those are my thoughts on that, and I don't know...
In my research in, in doing the uninhabitable ordinance, some cities actually have for both residential and commercial.
Right.
And so we can certainly look at, you know, coming back with that ordinance as we're tweaking it at the moment, adding a commercial piece to that, if the council wishes to see that.
And but, and I would say yes, but I would also like to see a more significant fee for commercial, because otherwise you're not motivating them. And one thing to say, a resident, you know, might have a house that's held by a family, you know, that's a second home or something, and I don't necessarily want to penalize residents who pay property taxes, but we have businesses here who do have the same concern, so there should be a cost for leaving it empty, that's my view, or a fee, because it should go to our public safety, support our public safety.
All right, I don't have a question. Do we have any question from the public? Seeing none. Comment? Any comments? I just want to thank Director Salantes and also the council liaisons and all the volunteers for your effort and time. Okay, so this is a receivable file. Do you have a, any, any motion? Do you have a motion?
I move to receivable file of yours. It's your pick.
Okay, somebody, please.
Vice Mayor?
I'm in motion.
Yeah. Now you just need a sec. Done.
Okay, do you have a second?
A second.
Rocco?
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Mayor Wong?
Yes. Anyway, motion passed. Albatieri, item 16.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The next item is the item regarding the building code adoption process. The state's health and safety code mandates that the California Building Standards Commission adopt and publish the California Building Standards Code every three years. The state's health and safety code also requires local governments to also do the same thing and adopt the California building codes. A local jurisdictions have the opportunity of drafting local amendments as long as they are more restricted than that of the state law. At the prior meeting, the council expressed concerns regarding the fire codes with respect to the mandate on fire sprinklers. The fire department will be drafting new language and will be presenting those codes and those provisions, as well as some additional thresholds at the beginning of the, of the year to address some of those concerns. Staff has also incorporated additional language into the staff report to address and to summarize the historic building codes and how we intend to use the historic building codes with our newly adopted historic process. As stated last month, the most significant change with respect, is with respect to the prohibition of natural wood roofs. Staff has provided the council with our latest edition of our pre-approved root and turtles list, and if this motion is, is approved, January 1st... list, and if this motion is approved, January 1st, wood shake and wood shingle roofs would be removed from that list. With this move of eliminating wood, natural wood materials from the list, staff feels confident that the materials that are on there currently are sufficient for the public. I will pass around some brochures not to advertise these products, but these are the products that are very popular in town, if the council would like to see these here. These are the products that the residents generally like to see and to purchase because they do provide a wood-like or wood-simulated look as the natural product does as well. Although the city will not incur any fiscal impact with respect to this modification, the residents who proceed with construction past this code amendment will see a rise in construction costs. For example, the construction after 2020 will mandate solar panels for any new construction or new single-family home. Because of that mandate from the state, it looks to increase construction costs of $9,500 for that development. In addition to that cost, the new energy standards are going to require certain measures take place in order to reduce the energy use of a home. And so that includes more energy efficiency windows, greater amount of insulation, different types of roofing installation methods will also add to cost to residents. And so with that said, staff recommends that council approve and adopt the ordinance number oh 19-1357 and also adopt the resolution of findings.
Question, Councilmember Matold?
We have to outlaw wood.
We don't have to outlaw wood roofs, we can certainly leave it. Right now, we did, well, about six months ago, we did remove natural wood shake and shingles from our pre-approved list. In order to apply for natural wood shake or shingles, you have to go through design review. But I believe that, I'm actually going to relay that question over to the fire chief. I think he has a lot more information related to the impacts to maintaining natural wood roofs.
Just, I did read the historic portion online, the California code provisions, from the website, and it does talk about how if potential historic resource or your home is in a historic zone, that our city will be adopting that they are allowed to have wood. There are different rules that apply. And wood roofs, there's a specific paragraph in the historic. So most of the homes here, not most, but many of the homes, particularly if the survey comes back with a large neighborhood areas that qualify potentially as historic zones, then it would be out of the regular requirement, and you can keep the same. I think the concept is, if I'm understanding, and I didn't print it out, and I meant to today, it has to do with keeping, maintaining the same. So if you have a wood shake, you can replace it. So that will be covered, I assume, by adopting a historic section within this, that the homes in that regard can keep the same.
Thank you.
That's my interpretation, but maybe Chief, or Aldo.
Certainly, a wood roof is a character-defying feature of a home, and if it's a qualified historic landmark, it falls under the historic building code, and it protects that.
But the building code, the historic part of the building code even applies to zones, was my point.
Right.
You don't have to have your individual home.
Oh, right, yes, that's correct.
Or do work to have that certain, or recognize, I guess is a better word.
Any other question? None? Any question from the public? Any public here? Yes, please come up.
I just wanted to talk to you today about the wood shingle issue. You know, there are so many substitute materials that resemble probably cosmetically a wood roof. A wood roof is the best thing to have. I have one, I had it taken off, which is beside the point. I think we should continue to be very restricted even in the historic area, having a substitute shingle material that resembles a wood roof and not using itself as a very safe ground against fire sort of.
Any other comments?
Just to answer you, they do talk about also in the historic building code that the treatment on wood shingles will be different. So they have to raise, instead of, I don't know that much about fire retarded treatments of wood, but new homes have to have an A or a B rating, and I believe whichever it is, the historic homes are allowed to have a B rating. So it's wood that's treated, as opposed to B.
Wood is my expectancy. It washes out, it's only here for about five years, then it's over again, and a wood roof is going to last twenty-five to thirty years, and now your habitat is back again.
All right, thank you. I'm going to close that portion. No public here?
I didn't know if there was a question, so I.
Any questions? Board, Chief, no? Anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, comments? Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number zero-19-1357 and the resolution R-19-28.
Do you have a second?
Second. And Mr. Mayor, we're going to read the title of the ordinance. Ordinance number oh 19-1357, an ordinance of the city of San Marino adopting by reference the 2019 edition of the California Administrative Building Mechanical Plumbing Electrical Residential Fire Energy Green Building Standards Historical Building Existing Building Appendix J Los Angeles County Grading Standard and Reference Standards Code with certain amendments, deletions, and additions and amending chapter 25 of the San Marino City Code.
Rocco?
Yes, please.
I want a clarification now. Can we or should we add something into the requirement that the issue concerning fire sprinklers will be brought back to us?
I think we already understand that direction. So if you want to make that a motion, it would be separate.
Well, I didn't make a motion. I just wanted to know whether or not it could be part of the motion.
I prefer it be a separate motion.
Rocco, please.
Councilmember Jacobowski. Yes. Councilmember Tal.
Yes.
Councilmember Yudi.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shepherd-Romney.
Yes.
Mayor Wong.
Yes, motion passed. Councilmember Matold, do you want to make a motion?
No, I do believe the direction is clear. I will write a note down.
Okay, all right. Well, since our Mayor Tal is still here, Councilmember Yudi, a motion to have him come up and close meeting, maybe for the first time, I don't know, this has never happened.
We need public comment.
Oh, yeah, no, so we're going to have him come up.
We're going to force yes.
Yes. He's just a gentleman, anyway.
He just didn't want to do it.
I just didn't want to do it, that's right. I'm not getting up here for this. Okay.
Any written communications or public writings distributed? I'm sorry, comments?
I just have one, but I have a feeling that council knows this and it's entirely based, but living and breathing in San Marino today. The school board did approve going out in March 2020 for a $200 million construction bond relating to a variety of projects within our school.
City council calendar, schedule and dates for future council meetings.
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Public comment.
I have a couple of news I just want to comment on. Item number one was a news article concerning the unit in Stanford, and the whole thing that was there applies to Carlos Huntington, one of the great robber barons that stole money from California for years. And I maintain that the Huntington Library continues to steal money from the city of San Marino. It's the biggest bidding business in the city. They take money from every source, they increase their revenue every year, and they give nothing back to the city. They get free water, they get minimal sanitation costs for disposal of 750,000 people, and they take our water, as they say, and they tear up our streets and our environment, and we get nothing but 150,000 a year, which I maintain that originated with 100,000 that I got from them for complaining about their lack of contribution to the revenue of the city. So I come back again to you to ask for an environmental impact fee on those people and that they may be required to contribute something to the city. What they give us is $150,000, hardly the cost of one police officer with a little service and overtime. And from there, you're back to square one with nothing in return, and they turn up our streets and our environment, and again, I say they give us nothing. And I think since they have a tax exemption, you should go for revenue from them to whatever resource you can get, and I believe it's individual attendees environmental impact fee, and I've raised that several times, and I raise it again tonight, and that just points out some of the crooked things that Carlos Huntington and the other four, three robber barons did to the state of California until the governor of Hiram Johnson put a stop to a lot of it, but we still get robbed.
You want to know a ripoff? Thirty-five bucks for a book company named Stanford.
Well, this is historic, but it provides the basis for what I want to comment on, and that is, I'd like to see the city go for getting some money out of those people. The second item I gave you is on pensions, it's a general comment, not specifically regimented to the city of San Marino, but Calpers and Calsters' obligation is terrific, it's going to increase. We're getting more revenue every year from taxes, and our reserves are building, and I caution once again against letting the reserves build because sooner or later, Calpers and Calsters are going to come and take it, and they're going to get it legally through the courts perhaps, and I still maintain we should spend our money on city infrastructure and other things and get our benefits from that money. If they come after us, let's file chapter nine and wipe them out. On the other hand, I also recall that you had a meeting with the city employees recently, and that's our biggest single cost, I've always showed you when you have these things because I don't know what comes out of them, and I haven't seen the results of what you gave them or anything more, but it also raises the point, and that is, you have to control personnel costs. And I see us going more bureaucratic in the city and with more automatic things happening in that area that are going to increase our costs, and I think we should pay more respect and look at it more closely. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Any more public comments? Yes.
It does my long-windedness tonight. I just wanted to offer my compliments to Mayor Tal. I have come to a lot of these meetings, and you are the first mayor for a day that I've seen who has stayed through the entire meeting, so I compliment you on your diligence.
Any more public comments?
We invite you back for our budget meeting.
Meeting adjourned, once they're December 11, 2019.